Good evening and welcome to the Norfolk Board of Selectmen's meeting of Tuesday, January 5th. First and most importantly, Happy New Year to everybody. I hope everybody had a healthy and safe holiday. My name is Jim Lehend. To my left is my associate, Mr. Bugby. To his left is Jack Hathaway, our town administrator, and of course Marion Harrington, our executive assistant. Mr. Palumbo is on business travel this evening and will not be with us. We do have a -- we have shortened this evening's agenda. We had a number of things that we wanted the entire board to be present for, so we're going to postpone those till our next meeting, which will be January 26th. So, Mr. Hathaway, would you read the agenda, please? I do want to remind everybody that this meeting is being both audio and visually taped.
As you said, a very short agenda. We, first order of business, please consider accepting funds in the amount of $63,005.9 from the Friends of the Council on Aging for a new bus for the Council on Age. We have an action item to whether or not to adopt the new state minimum wage, as municipalities are exempted from that unless we decide to accept it. And then, final item is a discussion item of the public safety building project, which we have a meeting this Thursday, a public forum, and we're at the library.
An acceptance of minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, an acceptance of minutes. Very near and dear to your heart.
Mr. Clerk, yes.
Mr. Clerk.
It's one and only duty. Side siding paperwork.
And I want to give a special thanks to my partner in crime here, Mr. Bugby, who was in Chicago for a business meeting and took an early flight to get here, and that's why we're meeting at 7:30, and you did yeoman's work in making that plane on time.
Appreciate it.
And thank you to the Boston traffic for allowing you to get here in the same day.
That was good. I can't believe you brought ribs for us. Adam's ribs.
You've got to put this in early, Jack. You know it's going, eh?
Let's take care of the action items here. Jack?
We have a memo in your packet from Mr. William Crane, president of the Friends of the Norfolk Council on Aging, and they have very generously delivered a check to the accounting department for $63,005.9, which is the amount that our DPW department has used to -- they went out and off the state bid list procured a new bus for the senior center, the Council on Aging. So, very generously going to be paid for by the Friends.
Do I have a motion to accept?
I so move.
Second with great enthusiasm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very, very grateful thanks to the Council on Aging for this tremendous donation, and it will serve the senior citizens well, and again, thank you very much for all your hard work in garnishing all those wages.
Will we keep the other one? I know the other one's old. Will they keep it anyways? Just as a -- no, I don't want to say bad.
I believe Paul's arranged to trade it in. It's got some frame issues and leaking issues. That's -- last I knew was the plan was to trade that in.
Looks as deceiving.
Yeah, no, it doesn't look bad. Yeah, we had -- we are still working on -- well, we've got a car for them, too. They need a -- they have the bus for, obviously, groups of people to go places, and then they also have a car for -- Norm drives around and picks up people for one-on-one type situations. Their car kind of died, but we did get them.
Is that the Taurus? Is that the Great Taurus?
Yeah, the Great Taurus. We got them a Crown Vic for a temporary solution, anyway. We'll get them through. Looking to get them a new car at some point soon.
So, Scott, you're here to talk about this --
I'm here.
-- a brief conversation for the state minimum wage discussion, our decision.
Yes. So, as we all know, the state minimum wage went up a dollar as of January 1st, 2016. The laws passed -- as it passed, excluded municipalities. So, I am here to ask the Board of Selectmen to make a decision on whether or not to accept that $1 increase. It affects very few people here in town. There's a few summer students that get hired for the camps that the rec department runs. There's potentially one person who works very part-time at the library. And also, it affects the rate that we use as a taxable amount for our seniors who work at Town Hall or other places to work off part of their property taxes.
So, that's a good thing.
That is a good thing.
That's a good thing.
So, the cost to the town is very minimal to accept this. That's the vote just before -- I mean, this bill goes for multiple years. You may want to reconsider in the future, so I'm asking that you accept it for 2016.
Mr. Bugby?
So move.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
It was quick. So, we're on to discussion stuff, I guess. Thursday, this coming Thursday, at the public library, we will be holding a public forum on the new public safety facility. We will be presenting some of the rationale behind the project, as well as all the financials associated with the project, so we hope that we have an overflow crowd. So, I know it's cold and people are busy, but if there's any opportunity -- and, Jack, can we arrange to get that taped?
It is, yep.
It is being taped. Great. So, can we just take a few minutes and talk about how we want to organize this?
We can. I know--
George is going to be there, right?
Yeah, and George--
George Cronin, for those at home, I don't mean to be cryptic, is chairman of the building committee.
Yeah, and he's going to come in tomorrow at some point, and we're going to have a discussion about his thoughts. I have bits and pieces of presentations that you've seen, and then a couple of new things that I want to show you tonight, but now I need to put them all together, and that'll be, you know, and certainly hear some feedback from you guys about what we want to talk about Thursday night. One thing that I did want to show you was, this is information that you've seen, but just--
I have.
He came up -- he always comes up at 10 past.
I sneak in early and go through all the stuff.
Yeah, I have to make sure I keep my stuff locked down, so he doesn't grab it.
I take all those copies, too.
Yeah, he does. And then he presents it like he put it together. So, this one I'm showing you, and I apologize, I'm getting this up on the board for people. Oh, now I--
Well, before we get into that, Jack, can we just maybe talk conceptually about the components of this? I mean, we want to give an overview of the current status, or background, if you will, of the project.
Yep.
And George, we're somewhat limited in what we can say in terms of promoting the project. We can go through the specifics of the project and the financials, but we, since the town vote, we can't really be in an advocating position. So, George can play that role.
Well, yeah, I mean, as elected officials, you guys can -- you guys can -- you can advocate. You can't use public resources. You can use your own personal resources, but you can't use public resources to advocate for something. But if somebody asks you a question, you can, you know, "Why is this a good idea to do this?" You can answer them.
So, we should give an overview of the needs, the background, talk about the proposed project, talk about the actual facilities and what we're proposing to do in those facilities, and then the financial impact?
Yeah.
Did we leave anything out? And do you want to talk about, should we include -- what you're probably putting up here is, should we include a discussion on the tax rate?
I think we should, because it seems to be the question, at least on Facebook. I've been kind of watching one of the Facebook pages, and people have been asking questions. I'm going to put some more information out there, probably tomorrow morning, but people have been asking about what the impact on the tax rate is, and, you know, as we've all talked about many times, the more and more people understand how the tax rate works and, you know, why it goes up and down, the better we can educate people. Obviously, I think the better, because I think it's -- the tax rate isn't the telltale.
It's your tax bill. What do you pay every year?
Exactly. It's the tax bill.
Well, all of us are going to be there. So, Scott, what part would you like to grab?
The parts that could be appropriate.
Well, we need to do an overview of the project, background of the proposed project, the purpose of the project. I think we should put rec in there as well, because that's a component of this. The financial impact, tax rate, all of that. I mean, and anything else that you think would be appropriate to share with people? What would you like to -- I think it would be good for us all to participate.
Yeah. You're the numbers expert, so you--
I mean, if you -- something that you feel comfortable with, you know, you and I can go over it over the next, you know, day or two, and I can--
Yeah, I mean--
Put up some slides.
Whatever part you'd like.
Put up some slides.
You know, I can cover anything. You know, obviously, George is probably--
Well, George will give the back -- George doesn't want to get into the detail.
No, he doesn't need to.
He gets into the nitty-gritty. He gets into the --
So--
George is the passion.
Yeah. He's the hammer. He's tall with me. Hopefully, he can do, you know, he can do that, yeah.
So, you want to do the background of the project?
Yeah, sure.
I mean, you pick it.
Yeah, start with the background.
Okay.
Background.
You want -- do you--
I'll do whatever you want.
Well, no, what are you comfortable with?
I can talk about the tax rate, if you want. The impact of this--
Okay.
-- project on the tax rate.
You want me to do the financials, or?
Sure.
Well, that's pretty -- we're saying the same thing.
Why don't you pick out what you want to do, and I'll just fill in any pieces in between.
I'll do anywhere. Doesn't matter.
You know-- Just write my name down next to something.
Okay. I'll do that. All right. Okay, so, sorry, I interrupted you.
The first time we tried to do was like 2:09, the background, you know, just so I have all the dates straight and stuff like that.
So, then this would sort of be a needs-based discussion, why we're -- why we need to do this.
Yep.
Little history on prior votes.
I think I copied you a letter I wrote to the Gazette today. The Gazette--
I didn't get something for you today. I'm thinking maybe, no?
Oh, really? I didn't either.
That's weird. No, you said you used rotates.
I copied the Boris Selectman's. I should have.
If that's the one.
I'm not crazy about our new email system.
I like it when it goes to the ma.u. I think that one works good, and there's also a b-o-s.
That's the one I was using.
Yeah, but stuff goes away. I don't know what it is.
I haven't bounced both anyways, Jack, so it goes to my Hotmail account, so to me, I get it twice, which is fine.
Yeah, I do as well.
I don't mind that.
Do you want to do -- I think it would be good, Jack, to do a presentation. I know we're going to go over it a little bit now, but I think it would be good to do a presentation on how the tax rate works.
Okay. How it's calculated?
Yep. I mean, people, you know, they see the number go up, and I've had folks say to me, you know, "You guys are spending too much," and that's not the case. We, you know, our revenue goes up 2.5% every year, the same as every other town in the state of Massachusetts.
Yeah.
To my knowledge. I don't think anybody's taken less.
No. Some towns will make -- they have -- yeah, they want to stay a little bit below the levy, but it's not a substantial number.
So, we spend what the law -- we haven't asked for a dime more than what the proposed rate allows us. And another thing, do you remember, you did a slide one time, I think we stole it from another community, about the dollar bill? Remember the dollar bill?
Oh, yeah. Where the money goes.
Could you do another one of those?
Yep.
That is a very good visual way to illustrate where the money goes.
Dollar bill.
Picture of a dollar bill, and then it's divided as to what portion of that dollar goes to what area, because people don't understand that we -- our oversight is on less than 1/3 of the total budget.
Yeah, and I know, Jack, you put it in other terms, that pie chart, you tell where how much goes to public safety, how much goes to school, and they see that, too.
Yeah. Yeah, I can definitely do the pie chart, and I've tried with the dollar bill, and I struggle to make it look professional.
Well, you could do the dollar bill just in two categories, if nothing else. Education, government.
Yeah.
You did just that, and then the pie chart can show.
I can do it. I've gotten more comfortable with PowerPoint in the last couple of years.
Okay. It's a good visual way of helping people understand where their tax dollars go. So, it's the second time I've interrupted you on the tax rate. My apologies.
I didn't even notice.
Well, these are, I really -- these are great slides that you put together. So, you want to walk through them?
I do. I was, uh, let me just--
Here, let me share these with you, too. You have those, too?
I think you've sent that before.
Well, no, these are new.
Oh, this is new again?
Well, this one's old. These are new.
Is this my packet, is that? I didn't -- or you got something here?
Yeah, that's an extra. You can have that one.
Yeah.
Yep, we're good. So, you, while you're playing with that, will you get together with Jack and frame whatever you guys want?
Yeah, because I have to leave it tomorrow.
Okay.
Because we have the firemen anyways. I think I was going to come early with Scott and Jack anyways, and I have 3:30 with the fire.
We had police today.
Oh, you did?
I think we're close.
Yeah, so you beat me. You got an easier one to call us on.
I told you, they're the ones with the guns.
Yeah, you have to, yeah, you kind of just say yes, but you--
It's a great group. We've had -- it's been a good negotiation.
So, with this screen slide on the board showing you, it's something we've talked about before, but it's our total value, our EQ value, our assessed value. The state calls it the equalization value. And it starts with 2007 over in the left-hand column, and we're at $1.55 billion. And we track that value all the way through 2016, and you can see it going down through 2011, and then it starts trending back up. And so, this is the first year that we're back above that 2007 number. So, that value every year is obviously all the, you know, if you -- how we calculate that is just adding up all the taxable property in town every year. What that obviously is, is all the property that existed in the town the prior year, plus or minus appreciation or depreciation, plus all the new growth that we have, so any new construction, whether it's in addition to a piece of property, could be a lot split. You know, if you take a subdivision and divide it into 15 lots, it becomes more valuable. Or, obviously, it could be new home or new commercial development. So, you can see, even though we're adding new growth of somewhere around $30 million every year, the value of the property goes down. What I also wanted to show you--
Hey, Jack?
Yes, sir.
I just thought of this, but simplistically, if you took this chart, and you took that 1,553 million--
Yeah.
-- and you redlined that straight across through 2016, there was no change. That number stayed constant. No, let me say it another way. The numbers stay the way they are, but the budget, the amount of money that we spend, stayed constant, no change, through those years, and you calculated the tax rate.
Oh, okay.
You see what I'm saying?
So, the values, the value of the property is changing, but the revenue that we're raising is staying the same?
Correct. So, in other words, in 2007, if the -- and I'm making this up. I think, actually, I think you have the number. The tax rate in 2007, where is it? Was $12.78?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's assume that that assessed--
That looks like '08 for somebody.
That's the actual--
I think it's down a year, right? I think it's '08.
It is. It's '08, yeah. All right, so the tax rate in '08 was $12.78. If that, and then following this chart that you have up there--
Yep.
Okay, if the budget stayed the same, no change, and you just went by the evaluations, in 2009, tax rate goes up.
Yeah.
Right? So, the tax rate would be higher all the way through until the year 2016 than it was in the year 2007, for the simple reason that the evaluations went down, even though the budget stayed exactly the same.
Yep.
That would be a good chart to show.
And that's kind of the--
Because that's a simplistic way of explaining to people that the tax rate is a function of your evaluations.
Yeah, I can do that.
That makes sense?
Because I kind of did that, but I did the reverse. I took out the--
You took out the new growth.
I removed -- no, I took out the depreciation.
Okay, yeah.
And just showed you what the tax rate would be.
That's your revised rate column, right?
Yeah.
Would be the thing out.
But that's kind of a simplistic way that clearly demonstrates that the tax rate is -- if the budget is constant, is a function of the evaluations. And if the evaluations go down, the tax rate goes up. The evaluations go up, the tax rate goes down. The bill stays the same. The bill doesn't change. It may individually, if the evaluation, if your individual evaluation goes up or goes down based on improvements or things of that nature, so the individual evaluations may change, but the bucket doesn't change. Does that make sense?
Yep, so just keep the tax levy the same.
Yep.
Change value.
That might be a more simplistic way to--
It's easy to do it.
Yeah.
So, just one -- the other thing that I did, if we can just compare these two slides, is--
There you go.
On this slide, I took out the new growth. So, as I said, every year, the change in the value of the total town, that's the assessed value, is you take last year's property values, you add in appreciation, depreciation, and then you also add in all the new growth, the new construction, which I said is about $30 million a year. Well, if we didn't add in that new growth, that's what this slide would look like. And so, what that is showing you is basically every property that we had in town in 2007 adjusted for appreciation or depreciation. So, that same $1.5 billion that we had is now only worth $1.3 billion. So, if you took those numbers and divided that by the tax rate, well, that would be double counting, I guess, but if you took our -- I mean, that's just -- so, when we calculate the tax rate, obviously, when the denominator, the number on the bottom that you're dividing by, when that number gets smaller, the tax rate goes up.
I think if most people that have lived in town prior to 2007 looked at their evaluation of their property at that point in time, and they had made no major improvements to the home, and looked at the evaluation this year, my guess is the majority of the homes would be below where it was in 2007, and that's what this chart--
I'm sure, yeah.
And that's what that chart says.
Yeah, by 15% or so.
Yep. That's what that chart says.
And, you know, as we talked about, you were, when Lorraine--
And by the way, in most towns, it's not just us. It's countrywide.
When you, when Lorraine was here last week, or two weeks ago, you talked to her about the change over the past year, and we all, you know, nothing is set in stone until it actually happens, but obviously, the feedback from both Lorraine and from the real estate world that we have here is that sales are continuing to -- sale prices are continuing to go up, so houses should be appreciating over this next year. You've got to remember that when we're looking at the 2016 tax rate that just came out, that goes all the way back to January 1st of 2015.
14, isn't it? It's the year 14.
Well, it's the year, it's the 12 months leading up to January 1st, 2015, so it's that sales data for that prior year. So, you're actually looking at--
2014 sales.
-- a year to --
2014 sales.
Two years' old data, yeah, so.
But, you know, I think all is just good, but the one comment I read and see is, you know, people always just say, "My tax bill has gone up." Never, they don't care, I mean, they care about rates and assessments, but I've seen it many times, like, when I first moved to Norfolk, my tax bill was, say, $4,200. It is now $7600. I don't know. That, to me, I think is what--
Some people, well, some people, yeah, certainly, tax bills have gone up over the past 10 years. I mean, they're going to go up--
2.5%.
They're going to go up 2.5% every year.
Well, they're actually going to go up a little more than 2.5% because the budget is more than just the tax revenue. Because you're basing the number off of the budget, not just the tax revenue.
Yeah, but the tax levy, the amount we can raise from taxation, only goes up 2.5% every year.
Correct. The levy only goes up 2.5% no matter what.
I just see that. That's probably, I understand, everyone said, that's my, you know, all this stuff is good, like they say, you know, you're right, people get hung up in 1808 versus a town that's 12 or 13, but the bill, I just keep seeing, you know, I'm in the same Norfolk page, you're looking at, Jack.
In theory, in theory, if everything stayed constant, which it never does, it's never will happen, in theory, and there's no new growth and all of that, everyone's bill will go up 2.5% a year, in theory.
And that, yeah, okay, yeah. Over time, that compound, that--
It never quite works that way, because evaluations shift, and you've got a lot of variables in there, but in theory, the bucket goes up 2.5%.
Yeah. The budget, as you said--
It may go up more.
Goes up more than that, because we have new growth, so--
Right.
So, we get, you know, $400,000 to $600,000, depending on what year you're talking about, of 2.5% growth in our tax revenue. We also get about that same amount in new growth, so the budget goes up by close to $1 million, at least the last few years.
We've had some years where it went down, when state aid was significantly reduced. I mean, we're still not back to where we were on state aid, so--
Right. The good news is the last couple of years, state aid has at least stayed the same.
It hasn't been a constant. We have had years where our budget's actually been lower through that mild financial crisis we had for six years.
I still, you won't like to hear this, but I still, a couple of days ago, I pulled out a folder in my desk of a five-year forecast that we had done back in 2004.
I remember it.
It was off a little bit.
Well, again, it was off to the whole country. I think the whole world was off, though. You know, we missed the recession in 2008, no one called.
It was the last five-year forecast.
Yeah, we were only off about $2 million, you know, no big deal.
Growth should be about $1 million that year, yeah.
Why wouldn't you? You would definitely think that, like, about, you know, it's easy to say now.
Well, in 2007, you would have thought that.
Yeah, that's great, yeah. Well, that was great.
Although, if we'd been paying attention in March, we all should have known. That was the month where the interest rates and the government bonds crossed.
Oh, yeah.
And when that happens, and I guess some folks saw it, but I admit I had missed it, because I watched that stuff, that forebode exactly what happened. But anyway, that's another story.
The gentleman, Bashir--
The 10-year government bond has always been the benchmark for measuring that. Anyway.
So, anyway, so that's my story on values. I think you're right, I had a couple of slides about the tax rate, kind of show the hypothetical tax rate. The tax bill, you know, I don't, I guess the skeptic in me would say, "Have you heard from anybody whose tax bill has gone down?" Because--
No, it's not. It's just, no, you're absolutely right. No, it's true. I don't think it has gone down worldwide, at least statewide, right?
No, but I mean, I'm being, again, I'm being sarcastic in that there are people in the town whose home values have held up and either stayed relatively level, not relatively level, not taking this dive like this has, or they haven't, or they've been on a, a lower curve and they, their, their values have stayed relatively high, even though their value has dropped.
Their bill wouldn't go up as much as maybe my...
So their bill has gone up. Other people have been on the other end, you know, from what I understand, the higher value homes in town took a real heavy hit...
Right.
During this period.
Percentage-wise, that would be logical.
So their tax bills probably, maybe didn't go down, but, but stayed, stayed flat, or didn't go up, you know, went up 1%.
I'm just saying, I, I'll, that's...
My point is, you're not going to hear from those people.
No, 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 exactly, no, you're not going to hear from those people, they're very quiet and happy.
Yeah.
And, and, and I would say, they, they're probably the ones that can most likely afford it, too, where you see the people that fix it, you know, again, I see it, want to fix by, you know, they get, you know...
They're going to go, sorry, they're going to go crazy, somebody, I have a feeling there are going to be different pockets of people now who, the, the, the graphs are going to cross, to use Jim's words, now the, now those people who took the heavier hit, who, whose tax bills went down, now their assessments, you would think, their assessments are going to go back up because they, they lost the most.
Right.
So it would say, when the market returns, they're going to get hit the most.
And they're going to...
That's great for the market value of their home, but it's bad for the tax bill.
And they're going to, then we're going to hear from them.
Yeah, so you're going to hear from them.
Yeah, 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 no, I could, I'm just saying, it's usually, I see a lot of it, the rate, of course, because that sticks out to 18, that, to me, it means nothing, it's how much I'm paying taxes, and what do I get for it, you know?
The other variable that you found that, that was interesting to me was that when you looked between the difference, even though we don't have a lot of commercial, we're 7%, 8% commercial, 7.5% commercial, the commercial values held their value more than residential property. So you pull that out of the equation, and it's an even bigger drop on the residential component.
Yeah, those, those, uh...
It would be nice if we could say it's commercial, then it would really help, it wouldn't have been as bad, but, but you don't, we don't have...
Yeah, there were some interesting, just a couple thoughts from reading some of the Facebook posts this week. You know, some people, there, there have been people debating amongst themselves about the need for more commercial development. Well, my, A, one, my first response to that would be, we're not holding it up by any stretch of the imagination, I think we've gone...
Please.
For 15 years, I've, close to 15 years I've been here, we, we, planning board and town meeting has been doing everything in their power to, to welcome, uh...
We've even done, we even did a tax break for a developer who then chose not to go forward with the project. I mean, we've, a tip, I think it was called.
And then one person said, you know, it's not the save-all, you know, don't, don't, you know, don't wish, don't wish for something that you, you know, you don't want to become Franklin was his...
Yeah, I saw that.
I agree, you know, I agree, you know, there's, there's a happy medium, but I agree, I, you know, it isn't, you know, you look at Rentham, they got the whole Rentham outlets, and that's a lot of tax revenue.
And two permanent, two permanent police cars over there 24/7, too, so...
Right, and, uh...
Comes with the bad.
It comes, it comes, it does, I would, I would agree with that person, it does come with some bad news as well.
But we, we've gone, I think, gosh, I just, I knew it this morning and now I'm forgetting it, but I, I think we are at about 97.5% residential...
At our peak.
Eight years ago. I think it was about, it was above 97, I just don't remember the decimal, and now we're just a tad over 92.
That's a pretty good move, I mean, it's fantastic.
So when you consider the limited opportunity we have, which is basically 1A and one big vacant spot here, that's not bad, and a lot of that's come in the last two to three years. I mean, the medical building, the lighting company that's going in down in Shire Park, I mean, 1A has been a godsend for us.
Yeah, the other thing is that, it's not commercial, but the other, you know, the Village of Rivers Edge and Pin Oaks.
Well, they carried us through that.
Their construction through that whole timeframe was...
That, that was our new growth. We were fortunate that that, of the timing of that. Well, I, I think all of this stuff would be good to present Thursday night.
You know, Jeff said he would be there, so...
Yep, we'll give him a piece, and, you know, you, you look at some of the neighboring towns, I mean, Medfield, which, their new tax rate is 16.75, but they're going to add, I think, 53 to 55 cents of the public safety building that they just approved, which is a 30, no, 18, 18 million dollar project.
Yeah, I had it in my head, I...
I think it's an 18 million dollar project. Actually, I got it here. Well, anyway, it doesn't matter, but, so their, their tax rate is going to be about 17.30. Midway is 18.11, Holliston 18.79, and that's a town very similar to us, and they have more commercial.
They definitely have a lot more commercial.
They should tax that bullet farm property for more, that's the biggest commercial draw in the town.
Which one?
There's a big farm, they have a bullet farm, they're hiding behind paying taxes.
And they've been skewing the tax rates there for a long time.
Have we taxed that as...
They're probably getting an exemption, be my guess.
Have we taxed this non-61A and say it's a commercial venture?
Somebody put a road right through our property that I'm still bitter about having on it.
Millis, Millis is at 17.44. Sherburne, 20.57. So it's, it's, where are you going to go?
Yeah, you know, and again, it's not my original thought, you know, a lot of people have said, this is a, this, this is, people have come here because it's a residential community, and, you know, as you said, we haven't had a tax override since 2005, you know, we've had a debt exclusion for the Freeman Kennedy School, that's a temporary debt because we needed a new school desperately. We're going to see the two King Philip projects come off the books over the next 10 years.
And of the surrounding communities, only Sherburne, Plainville, and Millis have a lower tax levy.
Levy, yeah.
Yeah, every other town has a higher tax levy than us. So...
I mean, it's good information, but people don't really get it, they only care what affects me.
I know, I know, nobody cares, because all they care, but I understand, you know...
What, what it means to me.
I just opened my tax bill, I think, yesterday or the day before, and it was up.
I saw it in the mail, I didn't, I didn't open it, just because I was at the mortgage company.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't open it until February 1st if I were...
I send it right to the mortgage company, then I just, I see it come out escrow, I'm like, ooh, it hurts.
Hate getting those escrow adjustments.
Oh, yeah, it's never goes down, Jack, for some reason.
I just walk in gingerly with a check every quarter.
Oh, man, no.
But we, we don't have any control over it, it's driven by the assessed values, and it's, I know it's, it's frustrating because we work hard at this to make sure that we run a fiscally responsible operation, and people think we're, our budget's, and it's not, it's not that at all, it's not what drives it. But if the assessed values go up 5%, 6%, like rumored for next year...
That's the hope.
Yeah, with a little bit of luck, that rate will go down. So we'll do this Thursday night?
Thursday night, 7 o'clock at the library.
Yeah, what about the idea, I remember having, like, I don't want to say, open house at the police station, fire station, people can come, or...
Yeah, I, I forget which, I talked to one of the chiefs about it, and we'll make sure that there's a couple of people there to...
Okay.
So if people show up at the open house and want to go walk down there or drive over there, they can do that.
Now, how, what, what can we do to, what can we do to encourage people to vote? I mean, is it, can we get a, is it, makes sense to do, I mean, I, I have mentioned that I would like to do a mailing to every voter's household. I mentioned, I asked you today about doing a reverse 911 for the clerk's office, just reminding people to vote.
Yeah.
Carol said she's willing to do that if there's no, if town council says it's okay.
Yeah, we'll run that by town council tomorrow.
And again, not promoting or anything, just saying, hey...
It seems like a gym of public services, reminding about...
I would think, just reminding people to vote.
Yeah.
It might not be, if it's not, we don't do it, I mean, if we can't, we can't...
I mean, we, we want people to vote.
Right, we're the other.
And I, I understand there's been a pretty heavy group of absentee ballots so far, which is good.
Yeah, I hope so.
And at least, you know, hopefully the weather will hold.
Yeah, I think, oh, we're still two weeks away. I was going to say, I think this weekend is already...
Up to 50, they're talking this weekend, but it's too bad, yeah, this week, I don't know whether...
We're two weeks out, right?
So what, what, what do you think?
I mean, we can still put together a mailing, if you want to do an informational mailing that just says, you know, this is the project, this is the impact on taxes, this will be the cost, come vote this day, is basically, you know...
I think we should.
Okay?
I think so, too, because I don't think many people are going to, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping the room is packed on Thursdays, but I don't think many people are going to show up, I don't show up.
Whatever the vote is, it just, just, just be an informed vote, I mean, that's, that's all you can ask. So I, I...
I'm fine with that, I think we should.
Okay.
Again, informational only.
I mean, we'll, we'll figure out where to get the money to do it, I, I mean, you can take it out of our expense account, we don't have one anyway, but you can take it out of there.
Yes, that's not going to the MMA meeting, so we'll spend that one.
Yeah, there you go, gas advisory board.
You're not going?
Back out.
No, Emily has to get back to school again, we messed up on her, we thought she could go back to school earlier, and she can't.
She grew up a week early.
Yeah, you can't, they, they're glad they take her for a week early, just for, any day they want $491, whether you stay a month early or a week early.
Oh, per day?
No, no, $491 to come back early, but you could, you know, but you could go back a lot early, that's, you know, it's like crazy, like, you know, they don't provide...
Six, right, down the street from 20...
Where is she, where is she going?
Maryland, yeah, University of Maryland. So she has to, she can, she can get in by Saturday at 10:00 AM, so she likes to go in, but on Friday.
You're, you're busy, I understand.
She's been to basketball games?
Oh, yeah, they're getting harder and harder to go to, as you can imagine, number three in the country, right? And so that, like, she's, you know, she's, usually could get, now she's...
Does she know influence down there?
Well, she, she calls Jake, Jake doesn't seem to take her calls, yeah.
Jake Lehman is a KP grad.
Yeah, he's a star, you know, he's, he's, yeah, he's the scene...
Supposed to be a first-round draft pick in the NBA.
Wow.
So he, it's been, it's just so popular now.
Tell I'm well-based, I have a strong basis of knowledge in basketball.
His family has a strong hockey background, too.
Is that the one with the round ball?
Yeah, yeah, the round ball, instead of, you know...
It's not on skates, but, you know...
So it's harder, it's getting harder to get tickets even for the students, and she used to be able to get, like, we went down when she got extra tickets, and we sat like four rows back, now they're like, they're basically saying for any Big Ten game, there's no, there's going to be no extra tickets, you know, a student might be able to get a ticket, but there's no tickets for friends and family, because, you know, those likes to go out to a game in February, but now, hi, maybe if they, I don't want them, I don't want them deployed.
Maybe they'll tank for a little while.
I don't want that, because they, I mean, number three in the country, you know, they have a good team, all five of their starters.
They're number three, they, they, yeah, they got a good team.
Really good, all their starters, the five starters...
What's their record?
Uh, 12 and 1.
That's a good record, really.
Yeah, Kansas and Oklahoma played last night, the two number, the number one, two team, I don't, I don't know who won.
Well, somebody had to win.
Yeah.
You know, the big, the big freshman on the team?
Diamond Stone.
Diamond Stone.
Diamond Stone, he's amazing.
Tell Chuck to, if he has any more grandchildren.
Yeah, he's, he, that was a huge coup for them, because the kid's like, he's going to be a monster, he's already like 6'11" and just grown into like, like a young man's body, right? I mean, Jake went there at 6'9", like 180 when he first got there, and they'd be, you know, their coaches, once they get a hold of you in, in college sports, they make you eat 5,000 calories, spend every day in the weight room, right, even, you know, so...
That didn't work for me.
Yeah. Yeah, when Jim went, hey, when Jim went to school, he was five foot four, look at him, he's a five foot nine monster, yeah, now he's a five foot nine monster, yeah, he's all, he's all right, yeah, so it does.
Five thousand calories a week, or day, a day.
He probably did, hockey burned it off, he burned that off in one practice, right, yeah. So they're all five of the...
When I went, when I went to, well, we don't want to talk about some...
All five of the starters.
They're the only team, I think, that has five starters.
Double figures, too.
It's hard to remember that far back.
Yeah, hockey, no helmets, or no helmets.
It's not that far, but thanks.
Even in the river.
So, okay, so we'll do a mailing, that probably should go out next week, then.
Yeah.
You want to kind of, it's catch, you want to kind of, as close as you can, so you don't forget either, too, it's like, whatever day, I don't think that line to get out, right? I mean, once it's a day, yeah, so...
We'll do it to every...
We've got some people that can help me, that know how to mail stuff.
Well, I'm sure there's, I, I know a couple of folks that have said they would volunteer, you know, afterwards I'll give you their names, that said they would help. I'll come down and, I'll come down and help, and I'm sure that's will.
Sue and Marion do a, you know, the warrants and the...
Do we have a sort of an automated system to mail every household? I'm sure we would, because we do the warrant.
We do the warrant.
Yeah, so we have to, same...
I'm just, I think, Jack, what's the day, gets two, like, gets thrown away, gets the day before, they can't, it's like, yeah, it's...
If we can try and plan for like that Thursday or Friday before, before the Tuesday, I would think.
I'd still do the 911, just to remind people to vote.
Is it a one-page thing, or...
Yeah, we've got to get it on one page.
Whatever I do, whatever you, whatever you want, Marion.
You've got, you've got to get it on one page.
One page, maybe back and front, like, call the fax sheet.
They won't read more than one page.
Page back and front, yeah.
Sales 101.
Well, one page, probably a trifold would open up.
I can do that, yeah, whatever you, yeah, I was thinking, Jim said one page, yeah.
Okay. So what else for Thursday night? Cole, Cole mentioned, he asked me if I would go with him to, um...
Oh, he's got Village of Rivers Edge.
Yeah, and I think that's next week, no, the week after. Uh, it's on my calendar.
It's in my calendar, but I don't see it.
I, I don't even know what I did with my calendar. No, it's, it's on my phone, wherever, oh, it's over there, never mind, but anyway, I, I said I would go with him, apparently some folks have asked him to come up there, and so I would, if you want to go too, Scott, Jack?
Yeah.
Have to post us, Marion, I'll get the date and time.
Are you going to start?
Oh, is it during the day?
No, it's in the evening.
No.
Yeah, I think it's...
I'll just say anyways, man, if you don't mind, if it's not trouble, just in case, you know, I assume I can, I saw that, no, thank you, I saw that going.
I think it's the 17th.
We can get, let me know after.
17th is a Sunday.
Well, then it's not the 17th.
It's not the 19th.
It's not the 19th, so it must be the...
13th?
Sounds about right, 12th or 13th, oh, I think it's the 12th.
Cole says it's the 14th.
14th, Cole says the 14th.
It's the 14th?
Yeah.
Oh, he's, he's listening?
He is.
Okay, thanks, Cole.
Well, you're doing a great job, appreciate that. And he wanted you to know that the UConn women's basketball team is still undefeated.
And they beat Maryland, they beat the Lady Terps, too, and they crushed them.
How's the Maryland hockey team doing?
Uh, Cole, what time?
I don't follow the college hockey, I know that, I know that Brown beat...
I don't, I don't think they have one.
Do you know, you see, you see the biggest episode, the Brown hockey beat PC?
Yes, I did see that.
That's amazing.
Yeah, I did see that. I believe hockey's pretty good this year.
I think, yeah.
Yeah, they got a pretty good hockey team. Brown hasn't been up there in a while.
I was going to say, no, it's usually Harvard, yeah.
They got a beautiful rink.
Oh, they do?
Oh, gorgeous rink, I've, I've ref down there, it's a gorgeous rink.
The Republican Town Committee is having a discussion on immigration that night, just so you know, 7 o'clock, according to my board chief.
Okay, I, I've got it on my calendar, so I'm planning on going, can you make it, do you think?
I think so.
So post us, Marion, if you would.
Is that the same night?
Yes, it is the same night.
Well, immigration will have to take a backseat.
Yeah, it's on my calendar.
All right, what else on this, anything?
No, I'll have, you know, I'll have the plans, I'll have everything on my computer so I can show it up on the board for people at the open, at the information session. Thought we'd go through it, but then just be able to answer questions, and whoever people want to talk...
Hopefully we'll get some people there.
Yeah.
Hope, hope, hope.
I hope so.
Okay.
There's a signboard, I think Chuck told me that they set up the signboard down at the police station, has anybody seen it? I thought, I think it says, "Vote on the 19th."
Okay, 19.
Uh, but I might have him change it to attend the information session.
And then change it back to 19, might as well, yeah.
Oh, the one down at the police station?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea. And you'll check on the 911, uh, reverse 911 call.
Yeah.
That it's an appropriate use.
Should be.
I would think, I mean.
The only thing I worry about is, you know, we haven't done it in the past, or we, you know, it's the perception, too, that, that you got to worry.
It's a special election, we haven't had too many specials, have we, I mean, that.
Nope.
I mean, I.
Not for eight years, or no, I guess Freeman Kennedy was.
All I'm thinking of is, how do we encourage people to vote, period, nothing more, nothing less. And, and if you think that that causes more problems than not, don't do it. I think, I guess I can see how there's a perception, but I struggle with that, because there's.
It's more to get people to go and vote, but you can perceive it any way you want, if it's, it's not like it goes up.
I know one, one of the things that was originally posted was, you know, that we're holding this in January to try and encourage a lower vote turnout or something, and that's nonsense. I mean, absolute nonsense.
Yes, we had the town meeting, when we had the town meeting, and we scheduled this after, within the timeframe that we're allowed to do.
Yeah, and, and.
The fact that the town meeting was supposed to be.
Again, I, I thought it was cleared up with Carol's post, but for, again, for folks, we, you know, we're required by law to hold that election within 90 days of the date of that town vote. And that did not allow us to hold the election on March 1st, it had to be held before that, in order to comply with the state law. And Carol, the clerk's office runs elections, we had no say in it, we picked the date, but it has to be picked within that 90-day cycle.
And nor could the clerk override that, that's state, state law.
But apparently that is still lingering out there for some unknown reason. Scott, anything else?
Uh, well, I want to make a motion to approve some minutes.
Yes.
So I moved to approve the minutes of July 28th, August 11th, August 25th, September 8th, September 22nd, October 7th, October 20th, November 9th, November 24th, December 1st, and December 8th.
You've been busy.
Marion's been busy.
Wow.
It's a lot of reading, it's like reading a novel.
Very exciting novel.
No, it is exciting.
It's fiction. I will second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Did you, you, you asked me a question today about the rec, do you want me to talk about that at all tonight, or do you want to talk about that Thursday night?
I'll leave that to your discretion.
Well, you know, Jim asked, we had police negotiations and, and kind of after that, you know, we talked about what would, what, you know, I think one of the police officers said, what do you think about what's going to happen to the vote? So we, we had that discussion, and then Jim said, well, what happens to the rec if, if the vote fails? And I said, I, I really, I, I think the state will get frustrated with, because we, because of the length of this project. They'll get frustrated and, unless we can come up with a revised plan to, you know, we have, so we have the $700,000 to $800,000 still available, maybe a little less than that, depending on how much we've spent in engineering, available from the vote that we took a couple of years ago, you know, whether or not we want to make the decision to prepare that Shire, Sharon Ave building to be outfitted just for the rec, if, if there is no police station there. You know, we'll have to look at that to see if it makes economic sense for Norfolk, if we want to spend that money and then.
Hopefully get back, or, right, right.
Obviously, we would then have the other half of the building to figure out what we want to do with it, either we rent it out or use it for a different purpose.
You could use it for the highway department.
Yeah. But I, you know, unless we can, unless we come up with a plan very quickly that, that figures out a way to get the rec in there, I think the rec will probably dissolve, because I think Rentham is already having, you know, they're, they're, my interpretation, this isn't directly from Rentham, was that they were a little frustrated when, when the location left Rentham.
Right.
Politically, they, they were skeptical of the project at the, at the selectmen level. Town administrator and the department heads are all, you know, they just want the building somewhere.
Where it goes best, maybe, or the most workable economic building, I would think.
So I, you know, so I think Jim, I caught Jim a little off guard saying that, I think, you know, I don't know for sure, but I think that the rec would probably be in jeopardy if, if this fails.
You caught me more than off guard.
Yeah, so there'd be no, we think we'd have no regionalization, or we'd have to go out and look for another, or another location, but the.
It's been on my mind since you obviously mentioned that about two and a half hours ago.
So, yeah, with the state now let us look for another one, it's been going too long, because it's not like they use the money, in one sense, like, states doesn't usually like to give out money quickly anyways, you know, if, yeah.
You know, they, they just want, if, you know, like I said, if we could come up with a, a quick Plan B, and, you know, I can probably, I can call the architect tomorrow and at least get him thinking about it.
We're going to know on the 19th, and like you said, how quick after the 19th.
Yeah, it's, it's a little more complicated than that, I mean, you've probably got about six and a quarter left.
Somewhere around there.
Yeah, probably about six and a quarter. We'd have to put the rec on the first floor.
Yeah.
Couldn't put it on, you can't afford, for some of the money we have, you couldn't possibly get it on the second floor, for all the construction costs associated with that. So that now impacts future use, should we?
Yeah.
I mean, it's just.
Really limits the building.
It does, it, it creates, there's a trickle-down impact to that, that, as I was thinking this through, that really, we got a very short leash period of time here to come up with a Plan B if this thing doesn't work. Or we might jeopardize the rec, which was really, that would be terrible. Four years worth of work.
It would be.
It's a good idea to have regional dispatch, anyway, it just makes so much safety sense.
And it would, it would impact, it would impact what we have to do down here.
It would, it would make our.
Yeah, makes our project more complicated.
C is for the public safety, because we now have to build a dispatch, which comes with a price tag of, you know, probably a couple of million dollars, really.
And, and we have repairs that are mandated on that building.
Oh, the cells failed again.
Yeah, it's mandated, so, I mean, the, the Plan B falls to Plan C and D, we, we, if this fails, we have a lot of work to do. Because we, we can't just sit back and say, ah, so be it, we, we gotta.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I don't want anybody to think I'm trying to, the scare tactics, the 40B tactic, but, you know, like you said, the, the cells have failed, the roof is, you know, we've, we've done a lot of repairs to the roof, but really the roof needs to be replaced. HVAC system is shot down there, the, the infrastructure of the building is just not capable to handling today's technology. I mean, it's just, you know, you think of the technology from the 60s and 70s that we needed, you know, we had typewriters and phones versus the, the technology that, you know, we have T1s going in, and we have technology at that building that just, you know, there's wires running below the roof, below the ceiling, which doesn't make any sense, but it, that's what it is.